Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the May 15th meeting of the City of Vista Planning Commission. Would you please join us in rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Jackal?
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, a nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Turley, the roll call, please.
Let the record reflect that all Commissioners are present except for Commissioner Kramer, and both student Commissioners are present. Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda, Commissioners, is the approval of the minutes from our May 1st meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes? And if not, can we hear a mission, a motion to approve? Commissioner Jackal?
I'm over.
Commissioner Carroll?
I will second the motion.
Okay. We've got a motion to approve and the minutes from our May 1st meeting. Please cast your vote. And the minutes are approved with Commissioner Kramer being absent. We'll move on to agenda changes. Ms. Chow, any changes to the agenda this evening?
Good evening, Chairman. No changes tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Next item on our agenda is oral communications. This is a time that we set aside for people to address the Commission on items that are not on our agenda. I have no speaker slips for oral communications, so if no one raises their hand, we'll move on to our first public hearing. In our public hearings, we're going to have a report from staff. The applicant has an additional presentation. We will have questions from the Commissioners of staff and the applicant, and then we'll open the public hearing up to the public. And if you wish to address the Commission, you need to fill out a speaker slip. We have several tonight, so we'll probably run our clock, and you'll have three minutes to address the Commission on your concerns about the project. There are a couple of additional items on this. We have a recusal. Commissioner Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My current employer has done business with the parent company of the applicant in the past. I don't think there's an actual conflict here, but there's the potential of one, and out of abundance of caution, I'm going to recuse myself from this hearing.
Okay. Very good. And then disclosures, Commissioners. Commissioner Jackal?
Thank you, Chairman. I would like to disclose that I met with Mr. Kim, not prior to this hearing, but prior to the previous hearing.
Very good. Commissioner Garrison?
Same thing. I met prior to the early design review.
Very good. Commissioner Looney?
I also met with Mr. Kim on two occasions.
Very good. All right. I think we're now ready for our staff presentation on the Buena Vista condominium project. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Chairman Rossler, and Commissioners. This project proposal by applicant, MLC Holdings, is to develop 44 single-family detached two-story condominiums on a 4.8-acre site. The planning case file is P-170042. The project site consists of one parcel that is, as I mentioned, 4.8 acres in size. It's currently occupied by the West Coast Baptist Church. The site contains the church building, a related school building, and supporting auxiliary structures, as well as parking areas, playground, and undeveloped land. The site is sloped with an elevation that descends approximately 20 feet from the southwestern portion of the site towards the north. The next slide shows images of the property. The site is bounded on the north by agricultural land and a residential structure, and to the east by agricultural land, residential structures, greenhouses, and an asphalt/dirt parking lot. Single-family residential structures bound the site on the south, which can be seen beyond the fence line in the image at the upper left, and an apartment complex bounds the site on the west, a portion of which can be seen in the image on the right. Covering the general plan land use designations, the project site and the property to the south have the same designation, medium-density residential, MD, shown in orange in the center of the slide. To the north and east are rural residential general plan designations with char within the county area. To the west is high-density residential within the city, and on the far east side is higher-density residential within the Shatter Ridge specific plan area. The existing general plan allows for multifamily residential development up to 10 dwelling Part of the applicant's proposal is a request for a zone change from E1 Estate Zone, which allows for two dwelling units per acre, to the RM10 multi-residential zone in order to allow for a maximum residential density of up to 10 dwelling units per acre, which would be consistent with the existing general plan designation. The project's scope, in addition to the zone change, it includes a request for approval of a site development plan, tentative subdivision map, condominium housing permit, to develop 44 two-story, single-family detached condominiums at a density of 9.2 dwelling units per acre. Approval of the project would include approval of a mitigated negative declaration that has been prepared for the project. Of the 44 condominiums, 13 units would be three-bedroom units at 1,800 square feet in size, 18 would be four-bedroom units at 2,071 square feet in size, and 13 units would be 2,367 square feet in size. All units would include an attached two-car garage. The project was previously seen by the Commission during an early design review, where the proposal then included 45 total dwelling units, as shown on the slide here. As shown on the next slide, the project still has the same basic layout, but has been reduced to 44 units. The open space area has been expanded. The project complies with the setback requirements of the city's development code, and the project includes a centrally located 7,181-square-foot recreational area, as shown in the drawing. The recreational area includes, as shown on the slide, an activity lawn, play equipment, a shaded dining area with tables, seating, and a barbecue facility. The project includes four parking spaces for every condominium unit, which is two garage spaces and two guest spaces in the driveway, totaling 176 required spaces for the project. Seventeen additional parallel guest spaces have been included on the private street area. In total, there's 193 onsite parking spaces. Regarding open space, 42% of the project site will be landscape area, which is 2 acres of the 4.8 acres. 10,000 square feet of that would become an open space, which would be landscaped detention basin areas. As I mentioned before, there's a 7,181-square-foot pocket park area. In addition, there are private rear yards, which range from 400 to 1,700 square feet, totaling 26,000 square feet in total. The condominiums would consist of Spanish and Monterey styles, which would be enhanced with metal railings, pot shelves, shutters, corbels, and gable accents. The next slide shows all four sides of one of the units. The additional image at the bottom left shows a street-side elevation that has been provided with an additional decorative vertical siding feature in order to enhance the elevation. The next slide shows the floor plan of the largest four-bedroom unit. There's one bedroom in the downstairs area, along with the great room, kitchen, and bathroom. There's three bedrooms plus a loft area on the second floor. In the early design review process, the Planning Commission provided preliminary projects to the applicant. That was in March 2017, and the following modifications were made. The plan was reduced by one unit to provide more usable open space. Two additional private street parking spaces were added for 17 total onsite. The street was widened on Buena Vista to align the sidewalk with the sidewalk that connects to the south, and also enabled more street parking to be provided there. Grading was reduced at the northwest corner of the project site so that the height of the retaining wall could be reduced as well. Enhanced architecture for the side elevations facing Buena Vista Drive was provided for the four units that are on that end of the block, and a parking management plan will require garage parking spaces be used for parking unencumbered by storage with routine inspections allowed. A mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the project in accordance with CEQA, which determined that the project would not result in any unmitigated significant environmental impacts. The MND was circulated for review from April 5 to April 25 of this year. All comments received, which was one letter, and the staff's responses to comments are attached to the MND. The project will be required to comply with the mitigation measures specified in the MND and include in the project conditions of approval. Staff's recommendation for the Planning Commission is to adopt a resolution recommending city council approval of the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Buena Vista condominiums project, to recommend city council approval of a zone change from E1 Estates Residential to RM10 Multi-Residential for the 4.8-acre site located at 1525 Buena Vista Drive, and a recommendation to adopt a resolution for the city council to approve a site development plan, tentative subdivision map, and condominium housing permit, to develop 44 single-family detached two-story condominium units located at the same address, 1525 Buena Vista Drive. That concludes staff's presentation, as was provided with the application materials. There were numerous letters of support that have been received for the project, and the applicant and his team is here available to answer any questions.
Very good. Any questions of staff, Commissioners? Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you. Mr. Winters, the parking management plan, that, is that language also tied into the HOA rules and CCNRs?
It will be required to be included in the CCNRs.
Okay. And then if down the road, if the CCNRs and HOA rules were to get modified by the residents 10 years down the road, does the parking management plan still stand?
It should. If the Commission would like to add to the condition of approval that's been written in, we might modify it?
I, very often, I, we have a provision which, for city-specified CCNR provisions, that they cannot be amended without the approval of the city.
Perfect.
And we'll make sure that that is included in this, if it's not already there, but normally it's there.
Okay. Great. Commissioner Jackal?
Thank you. Mr. Winters, my concern is about the traffic study. This is a lot of people that are going to be put on a very narrow, winding road. Are you sure the traffic study correctly says that it's not going to cause a problem?
The traffic studies show that the project would, I believe, add approximately 350 daily trips to the street, if I remember correctly, from the top of my head. I have to assume it was done and modeled correctly, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Winters, why is the southerly entrance to Buena Vista Drive gated? Was that a fire department requirement, staff requirement, applicant's idea?
It was a city's traffic engineer's preference to reduce the number of driveways coming out of the project site. It also enabled more street parking to be available in front of the project, so that south exit is just available for emergency access only.
Okay. All right. Very good. Mr. Tucker, would you like to come and tell us about your project or answer questions that the Commission has? Mr. Garrison, did you have questions of staff or...? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, did you wish for the applicant to proceed with their presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair Rossler. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Lester Tucker. I'm the Vice President of Forward Planning for MLC Holdings. I'm thrilled to be here tonight. I've been working on this project with my team for roughly 18 months, and it's always exciting to be able to show you the fruits of our labor and present a project, so thank you. I'd first like to thank staff. Everybody at the city has done bang-up job working with us to try and create what we initially thought was a good project and improve it every step of the way. So I thank you all. Chris worked really hard and long hours on this project under John's leadership, and the Traffic Engineer and Engineering Department in general have been very helpful in bringing the best possible project forward. I'm going to keep my presentation brief and just cover a few background notes about MLC Holdings and Meritage Homes to start off with. Meritage Homes is a national public home builder with hundreds of new home communities across the United States. We're known as the most energy-efficient and green builder of all of the publics. We're just finishing up a project. Maybe some of you have seen it. It's about three and a half miles out Monavista Drive here called Quintessa. We also have an actively selling community in Carmel Valley, in Pacific Island Ranch, and lots of communities throughout Southern California, Northern California. MLC, the acronym's not a household name. It stands for Meritage Land Company. Very creative people in Scottsdale. We're really the front-end entitlement group for the home-building operation, and so we work on projects for years before we ever have an approved lot to go build and sell and deliver the American dream. We have just a few images I'll share with you. There's some more detail about MLC on the screen. This would kind of illustrate the quality of the project that we would propose to deliver here in the great city of Vista. This was the corner of South Buena Vista Drive. Looking southeasterly, the emergency vehicle gate that was brought up would be in the direction of that car. So this would be the project entry here. That car is headed towards Melrose. Here's a street scene, just showing the single-family detached homes. There's a lot of confusion out there because we do call this a detached condominium project, but to put any fears or confusion to rest, these are single-family detached homes. The only way you would know it was a condo is if you were a member of the HOA or you went down to the city and pulled the final map. So here's the elevation and the drought-tolerant landscaping. Here's an image of our outdoor dining area and barbecue area covered by a shade structure. Here's the kiddos at it. Plenty of room to get their energy out, and I have to ask my architect if that person is taking a selfie or a picture. But regardless, this is the open space area in the center of the community with a turf play area and a totlot with play equipment. There's a lot of project specifics, and I would prefer maybe to let Chris's presentation, he did a great job kind of covering a lot of the details. I will mention, though, approval of this project will implement the vision found in the current housing element of the city's general plan. The project includes specific and meaningful traffic mitigation components, which I'm going to get into in just a moment. The project exceeds the required parking by 17 spaces and also exceeds the open space It's been met with favor by many of the area residents and the direct residents on Wesley Way, where we've spent a lot of time knocking on doors, attending community meetings, HOA meetings, and talking to people about what's important to them in the city and what they would consider an important component of any new residential project. It also provides badly-needed, attainable, single-family detached homes and opportunities for the next generation to purchase a home. The American dream's still alive. It's tougher, but it's still alive. Quickly, here's just an exhibit of our open space calculation. 19,682 would be the total combined private and common open space required, and we've provided 33,000 and change there. Again, we've got an additional 17 spaces for parking. I would have showed a parking stall, but they're just not nearly as attractive. Here's the design review comments that we received. Chris touched on many of these already. So briefly, we added more open space by removing a home, or we took the 45th family off the list. We added more open space, excuse me, we added more architectural enhancements, we added more parking, and we truly did work with staff and the traffic engineer and our own consultants to try and mitigate traffic to the greatest degree possible. And speaking of mitigating traffic, I want to get into that because it's the thing we, and quite likely you, hear the most about in the city right now. There's a couple of conditions that are part of the conditions of approval for the project that we fully support. As I stated previously, we really, we truly do listen and seek out input from neighbors and community groups, and we understand the importance to listening to them and then working with staff to try and come up with solutions. And clearly, the most common issue here is the traffic. The conditions require that the project pay, and these are just standard conditions. Our traffic impact fees are $239,000, and we're going to pay another roughly $20,000 towards intersection improvements at Mar Vista and Thibodeau to try and improve the signal there. We also are being required to install a new striping arrangement on Buena Vista Drive, which will extend the current left-hand turn lane by an additional 300 feet. Roughly 20 cars will also fit now, 20 more cars would fit into the left-hand turn lane on Buena Vista heading south on Melrose. But as a demonstration of our commitment to really improving the communities where we build homes, we worked with staff to keep trying to find other things that we could do that would be specific and measurable and a true benefit to the congestion. And what we came up with after consulting with the traffic engineer and others was it was determined the most impactful thing is what's referred to as a dedicated or protected left-turn movement from Buena Vista onto Melrose, heading towards Rancho Buena High, and also from Albertson's onto Melrose, heading towards the freeway. And I have a couple of exhibits here. The improvement will reduce congestion such that that intersection will flow much, much A cost estimate was prepared for this work and agreed to with the city as part of the project. MLC is willing to accept a voluntary condition to improve this intersection. A contribution of roughly $66,000 will improve this intersection, and we'll just, I can just jump to this intersection here, such that the flow of traffic will be a protected left-turn from Melrose, which is on the top right there, where it says, "Install New Signal." You will have a protected left-turn. There will be no through-traffic coming across from the current Albertson's location. And you will also be able to turn left out of Albertson's without any cross-traffic coming from Buena Vista Avenue. This requires the installation of a new signal. It also requires the installation and widening in the left-turn lane to be constructed at the Albertson's side of the intersection. Once these left-hand turns queue all the way down during the peak hours, the flow of traffic at these intersections is going to improve dramatically. And I'm no, I wasn't nearly a good enough student to be a traffic engineer, so I'll let the people who are the experts in counting cars and determining signal sequences and other metrics to improve traffic talk about the details. But we are committed to improving the congestion in this area and being a developer who's willing to work with the city and volunteer to improve things that are known issues in the area. Improving this project, approving this project, and including this condition actually makes the traffic better. It's not every day you get to say, "Hey, could you approve a residential project?" and we're going to improve the traffic situation. So I think that's something for you to consider as you deliberate on this project. Our traffic engineer is here to answer any specific questions. And again, this is, this is a voluntary condition. This is something we're willing to do to partner with the city and to demonstrate our commitment to the neighborhood and improving the quality of life for everybody. I'll also show you quickly, and I apologize for the crudeness of this graphic, but if you see the blue line there down the middle of the street, you can see that's just extending the left-hand turn lane about 300 feet towards the project site, so additional cars who are turning left, possibly to go to high school in the morning, can get into that left-hand turn lane and actually make it through the light. That's going to free up the straight and right-hand traffic as well. I would ask that if you were to find favor with this project, that you would improve in any motion, include in any motion to approve the project, that this condition be included as something that we're willing to do. This would bring, you know, an additional almost $70,000 on top of the $260,000, but this $70,000 is going to go straight to the area where it's most impacted, closest to our project right now. We're good developers. We're consistently looking to make a positive impact and difference in the neighborhoods where we build. You know, this is the kind of thing that we would do again in our next project in the city of Vista to make sure that you know that we stand behind our projects and we stand behind the improvement of issues in the areas where we're building. So this is definitely specific and a measurable impact. I'll show a quick video here, very quick, of the project. This is the open space detention area for water quality coming around to the barbecue and turf area and totlot. That's kind of up at the top of the community, just to give you a, it's kind of hard to see with the light shining on it, but hopefully you can kind of get a little bit of a peek of the type of neighborhood that you're going to get. In summary, I'll offer, we know the importance of partnering with neighbors and communities where we build homes, and we're demonstrating that tonight. I feel strongly that we are making a commitment to our partnership and that this is the right project in the right location for the right reasons and with the right developer, and I urge you to support this project. We badly need new homes, as everybody knows, and it's not easy to get them built. It's not easy to approve them sometimes, but this is the right project. Thank you for your consideration. My team is here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tucker. Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Garrison?
Mr. Tucker, just one question. If you're going to extend the left turn on Buena Vista and you have cars... If you're going to extend the left turn on Buena Vista and you have cars in that left lane to turn left on Melrose South, aren't we going to block the traffic coming from the complex that was just approved that's in, under construction behind the old Burger King? Because that's going to be their primary way to go south, or the only way to go south on Melrose. And by having that left turn lane, right now, that left turn lane starts just past that entry.
I'm going to defer to my traffic engineer, if you don't mind. Commissioner?
Okay. But you see what I mean? Right now, traffic coming out of that old Burger King can turn left on Melrose, and they only have to go through two lanes of traffic.
Yeah, I certainly see what you mean. My name's Justin Slavely, Urban Systems Associates, traffic engineer. Worked on this project, did the traffic study, and when challenged by MLC to see if we could roll up the sleeves and see what more we could do, working with city staff, these were two improvements we came up with. So extending the turn pocket is only part of the equation. It kind of improves the approach to the intersection. It's kind of a weird configuration, being on a curve and things like that. So it's more of an operational improvement. We don't anticipate that all of that storage will actually be necessary, that there will be cars queued on that entire turn pocket. That would be a lot of cars queued there. So the second part of the improvement is actually perhaps more important, and that's the widening on the driveway over at Albertson's. And that is to provide what we call eight-phase operations. So that allows more green time to be devoted to the movements that need it and more customizability on the signal timing. And that's going to make a significant improvement, probably about between fifteen and twenty percent improvement in delay in the AM peak hour. So we actually, I guess we could look at that left turn lane as icing on the cake. I don't anticipate that that will affect vehicles wanting to exit there and enter that turn lane or turn left and go to Melrose.
How many, Mr. Winter, do you know how many apartments are in that facility that is under construction behind Burger King?
Probably look to Mike Ruster to confirm, but was it forty-seven? Forty-seven.
So you would have up to three-hundred cars per day coming out of that residence. Some of them would go left or right on Melrose from that entrance by Burger King. Some would come up to Buena Vista there and turn right, but some are going to want to turn left if they want to go south on Melrose. So that could be a problem of blocking that, you know, that traffic where people coming out of that old Burger King aren't going to have any way to turn left out of there. I don't know what the answer is, but it seems problematic to me.
I understand your point, and I will point out that the entirety of that project also will be served by another ingress egress that's directly onto Melrose. So it won't be the entire project that comes out of there.
True.
In order to get out and turn left there, the fact that that lane is going to be able to clear more readily as you turn left by creating the additional improvement in the signalization and the longer stacking, hopefully people will be kind drivers and let people in if in fact it is stacked up. But certainly, if it clears, the car would be able to get out and turn left.
Has the city traffic engineer considered that, Mr. Winter?
The city traffic, the city's traffic engineer, as well as a peer review company, has looked at the traffic study.
And considered the traffic that is going to be coming out of that development behind Burger King?
Yes. In fact, I think it was, it might have been the city's traffic engineer that drafted the plan for this.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? I had a couple. Rear yard and rear patios, you've got your, a three-panel slider going out to the rear yard. Are you going to provide any type of improvements out there, or is that up to the homeowners?
We would typically provide a concrete pad at the rear of the homes. If homeowners choose, they can install shade cover or pergola or whatnot to improve their own rear yards. Even though this is a detached condo, that will be exclusive to the homeowners to improve how they see fit.
Okay. And in your hydrological zones, you've got private and public zones. The public zones are going to be maintained by the HOA. In the rear yard, the slopes are going to be privately maintained. The plans call for a drip system. Are you going to provide them with a controller and timer for that drip system, or how's that work?
Typically, on any homeowners association where there's mandatory maintenance required and watering limitations, which is everywhere, then the homeowner is provided with irrigation controller as a standard feature in their home.
Okay, very good.
And a fifteen-page educational booklet on how to save water.
Very good. Last question. On Plan Three upstairs, you have a loft. Any plans to offer that as an option for a fifth bedroom?
No.
Okay, very good.
We will not be offering, that would be a structural option, and we won't be offering any room options or structural options in these homes.
Okay, very good. I have no other questions from the commissioners. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Going to open the public hearing now. I have a fairly lengthy stack of speaker slips, so we're going to, I'm going to call a name, ask you to come down. You'll have three minutes. I'm going to call the next person, and I would appreciate it if you would be ready to come and speak as soon as the first speaker is finished. So in order that we receive speaker slips, Stephanie Green?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Stacy Green. I'm a member of the Building Development Organization here in San Diego County. I live and work in North County, and I've been involved with such communities that Hallmark Communities built up here in Vista, Borden, Glen, and future projects that they're planning on building. So I know the importance of understanding the housing needs here in San Diego during this crisis. I'm also a mother who has a thirty-something-year-old child who's well-educated, was a teacher up here in this area, and left the area because she couldn't find suitable housing for a workforce individual who is well-educated. What this is an example of is how our young people who are well-educated are leaving San Diego and the county areas and surrounding towns such as yours because they can't find proper housing. This beautifully designed project represents family housing for workforce individuals who are our teachers, who are our future for our families. And this particular, well-designed, above a lot, and I've been in the business for over twenty years, so I greatly endorse this project and ask you to approve it tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mundi Manning, followed by Martha Bergman.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I am a homeowner in Vista, have been for almost twenty years, and I support this project for two reasons. One, I love the forward motion that we've had in our town recently. My husband and I were talking about it, and we found that we're staying in town now and spending our money on the weekends here instead of going somewhere else. There's so much going on, and the improvements with downtown and even festivals that are happening, it's just, it's, it's nice to be here. And that brings me to my second point. We want to stay here, and we are looking at in the next year or so renting our house out and finding something new and with a lot of the features that this project offers. And we want to stay in Vista. We don't want to start looking somewhere else, so we support it, and we hope you do too.
Thank you very much. Martha Bergman, followed by Joseph Robbins.
My name is Martha Bergman. I've lived in Vista for twenty-two years, and I think you forget that you are not supporting the people that have lived here for all these years, who see what the trouble is with the traffic. I can look out my balcony, and I can see what's going down Buena Vista, and it's crowded every day. We do not, if you live here, do not go out to Melrose during the morning hours or during the, when school gets off. And then sometimes you have to be careful as the businesses get off going down Melrose because it's so crowded. You can't go into this, into Albertson's and shop and try to get out unless you want to wait fifteen to thirty minutes to get out of that parking lot. And you talk about making the egress bigger at the 7-Eleven where Burger King is. How are the people going to get out who, who get their gas, and they have to get over to the right side to get out? Or the people coming from the Nucci's parking lot area? I live in a house that's twenty-three hundred square foot, and we have four cars when my children were living with us. And don't tell me that a two-car garage is going to, and have a twenty-three hundred square foot house is going to only have two cars. You have children that go to school, who go to college, who have their jobs. There will be more cars, so they will not be able to handle all those cars. So I wish you would consider making it a smaller community. When we first moved here, we were told that if anything ever sold, that they were half-acre lots or acre lots. So we were like, that's fine. It's not going to impact the community that much. If we have an acre home, we're not going to have forty-five homes on what is five acres. So I really wish you would think about that, and the people who do live here, who have lived here, who have supported this community, please keep us in mind too. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Robbins, followed by Pastor Phil Clark.
Commissioner, I, my name's Joseph Robbins. I live on Casablanca Court. I look at this from the back of my house. Been in the neighborhood twenty-three years, as Ms. Bergman has been, and my issue is the parking. It's, and there was a conflict with the slides that were up today. On the negative deck, it said there were four parks per unit. It didn't say anything about two guests, two in the house. It said four parks. So their numbers were seventeen guests, and that, there were seventeen guest parks and the rest were parks on the, on those properties. I can't park guest parks in my, on my property. I can only park in my garage. I would ask that they have that same restriction over there. I don't want to look over there and see every one of those homes with two cars in their driveway. I would ask that same respect that we have on our side. I'm, I'm just concerned with that. I'm, I am concerned with the traffic as well. I don't, I don't understand the conversation about the traffic study because the negative deck says that there was no traffic study done, that they took information that was available. So all this conversation about existing traffic studies doesn't make sense. And then to talk, to tell me a neighbor and a person that travels throughout those neighborhoods that any of those intersections are ABCs or underused during any hour of the business day, five days a week, is insane. Anybody over there, you can't get around over there when the school's in. You can't get around over there at night. It's challenging to get over here tonight through those back streets. So you can't tell me those streets are underused in any, any shape or form. So I would just ask you to downsize that project. I appreciate what's been done. I appreciate how it looks, the time that's gone into it, but the impact over there has not been well thought out. They even talked themselves into the corner of the left turn tonight. There's not, the, the infrastructure's not there to support that much growth. So I would ask for that first, and then the full-blown project. Thank you.
Thank you. Pastor Clark, followed by James Barhill.
Good evening. I'm pastor of the church of the property which is under consideration, and we have been there for forty-four years. I've lived there for forty-four years. That's my home where I grew up. It's where I met my wife. Matter of fact, the newest building that we have is the one that my wife and I were married in. We were the first couple married there. My father pastored the church before me, so I have a lot of emotional attachment to this, but I believe in the project. I think it's good. It's good for our church. It's, it's great for our church. And we will come out of this being totally debt-free and having more classrooms and offices, which we desperately need for our church. I would also like to say that even beyond that, that I have lived in there, this traffic situation, we need, we need those lanes now. Because with the school traffic, that's the biggest problem, is the school traffic in the morning. It's hard to get into the right lane. You only have, either, either you're in the lane that goes straight and right, or you're in the lane that turns left. So this prospect of putting in those extra lanes, I think, will be a tremendous thing. And I would like to say that this MCI Holdings Company has been unbelievable for us to deal with. Sounds like they've been good with the city, wanting to do whatever you want them to do to make this project work and to be a benefit to Vista. I too, for the first time in my life, am looking for a house that I can buy because I live in the parsonage on the property. And so now my wife and I are looking for a home to buy and stay in Vista when I retire, which isn't that far away. So I want to stay here too, but there are no homes. So we would appreciate you to consider the fact that we folks that want to buy homes, we, we deserve the right to own a home. And I really would appreciate it if you would really consider this because I think they're beautiful, I think it's going to be great for the city, and I don't think there would be any more traffic issue than there is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Pastor Clark. Mr. Barnhill, followed by Edward Underwood.
Yes, sir. Good, good evening. My name is James Barnhill. I'm the, I'm the principal at the school that operates on the property of the church. The church has a small Christian school, which is something a lot of people don't think about. So Monday through Friday, every morning and in the afternoons, families drop off their children, their vehicles, take up the space on the roads, and they bring their children to, to our church for school. They drop them off, and then they come back. Just a little background about myself, I've been a member of the church for over twelve years. I've served in the military all over the, the county. I've always tried to make Vista my home. I couldn't make Vista my home now. I live in Escondido. I have to commute to the church every, every, every morning. The church has been in the area for over forty years. The condition of the church now, it's falling apart. We're, we're smaller, we're looking to move. We've dealt with the company for, for a couple of years, years now. We've, we've been in escrow, and it's been delayed multiple times. The fences around the house, around the property are starting to deteriorate. There's homeless people starting to come onto the, the property and starting to set up camp in the open areas that aren't being utilized. The traffic, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, the traffic issue is personally to me, the traffic is not the issue, it's the condition of the road. And we're in no condition to put in the gutter and the sidewalk that that proportion needs. And then the school and the homeless, okay? And I, I support the project.
Thank you. Mr. Underwood, followed by Mark Solomon.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Edward Underwood, and I just want to say I support the project. I'm currently stationed in the Marine Corps, and speaking from my point of view, I work with a lot of young men and women who, when they get out, they want to stay here. And I'll just say that they're definitely going to need homes and houses within the area because, like I said, they love this area so much. So basically, I just want to say I support the project. It's great for our church, and it's also great for the, the members of the military who get out and decide to make this their home. So, thank you.
Very good. Mr. Solomon, followed by Raymond Davidson.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Mark Solomon. I've been living in Vista since 2010, and I'm a member of West Coast Baptist Church. As a member of a West Coast Baptist Church, a Christian church, God-fearing church, we could not consciously release our property could not consciously release our property to a project that would be less to the community than what we were. We are a church who continually tries to reach out to the community, to make the community better. So in consideration, with everything that we've been told, everything that we've walked through with this company, we believe that this would make the community far better than what it is currently right now. As far as traffic, yes, there's a major problem with traffic. And they have done studies. They've even put out the road strips to check the traffic on both sides, the Buena Vista side and also on the Albertson's side. And I have full confidence that the company has worked with the city to make sure that any impact would be minimized in the community. And I want you to know that I do support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davidson followed by Jones Altman, maybe?
Alan. Hey, good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Raymond Davidson. Very briefly, kind of like a pastor, I haven't been in for forty-four yet, I've been for ten years. This is the only church I know of. This is the church I got saved in. This is the church I grew up in with my Christian faith. So for me, it was a stronghold for me to let this place go. But however, like that dear brother mine said, we prayed about it, we sought the Lord, and he gave us the peace that passes us all understanding. So, and for me, not just faith-based, but as a single man, someday hopefully be a homeowner, when I heard about this process, because I'm a trustee with the church, I'm like, man, I can live here. Because I've lived from every Shadow Ridge around the block I've lived around, always in an apartment, wanting to have a house but couldn't find one. There was one time I lived in L.A. and still went to West Coast because I couldn't find one. So when I hear the prospect of having, you know, affordable homes, you know, at that cost, all I see is myself in that picture. So I approve, I was about to say I approve of this message. I do approve of this message. But I approve of what they're standing for. That's all I got. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Alan Jones, and I'm, I live in San Marcos, but do business in and around the North County, San Diego area. And I just wanted to, matter of fact, explain this shirt to you quite frankly, very quickly. I ran into a elderly couple several months ago in Escondido, and they had just had their first great-grandchild. And they were just absolutely ecstatic, just ecstatic. They had their son with them. And then we got further into discussion, and they proceeded to tell me they were heartbroken because they were having to leave San Diego County. And they indeed were moving to Perump. And I don't know if you know where Perump is, but it's, it's a nice place, but I, it's, it's pretty hot. It's pretty hot. But I have to tell you, I, I know the project. I've been looking at the project, and I, I, you, you all know we need attainable housing in San Diego. And this company has done a great job. And I want to let you know that I'm in favor in asking you to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Followed by Douglas Bearman, I think.
This is kind of fun. It's Victoria Beenan, anyway. I'm not against the building of the houses. I think forty-four might be too many because of the traffic and because of the Wilmington Residential, which is going in behind the Burger King, which is forty-seven. And nobody has brought up Stone Mark, which is going in, which I think is, I forget, twenty-something. We'll say twenty-five to thirty. I can't remember houses that's also on Buena Vista. All of this is coming onto Buena Vista, and nobody has addressed the issue of people going left out of the development and down the little county non-maintained road and around the hairpin turn, of which the people who live there are tired of hauling cars out of their fence. Am I correct in that most of Buena Vista is maintained by county? Yeah, uh-huh. And they don't maintain it particularly well. And that is a dangerous road. And you're adding, it's great if everybody wants to go out on Melrose, but they don't. And if you drive that road at all in the morning, you know what the other people have been talking about. It's pretty crazy. And it's people that are late to work, late to school, and they're, I had somebody try and pass me on the hairpin turn in the morning, which just was mind-boggling. So you've got the twenty-five to thirty houses at Stone Mark, the forty-seven condos which are already being built, and the forty-four here. And I love the street stuff mitigation they're doing with the turning and, you know, all of that will help. I just feel like, and I'm not against building, and I know people need housing, but I think it's too many for that particular location. The other thing that I'm worried about is, all I see recently is zone changes, zone changes, zone changes. And it was zoned to be one acre. Well, even if you drop it to quarter acre, say you have the number, say it's twenty-two versus forty-four, I'd like to know the prices of those forty-four single-family detached condominiums. Are they really affordable? They look very nice to me. They're better looking than the house I live in by far. So I'm wondering just what affordable means. Nobody's mentioned the, the price or the cost of those homes, so. Oh, and the apartments on Melrose, Shadow Ridge Heights, there's a hundred-some-odd units there. There's nowhere near enough parking. And I know people that live there. They go all the way past the Nucci's and, that's not a Seven-Eleven, whatever that gas station is on the corner. And they park on Buena Vista. And they've had to put no parking things up and pushing it farther and farther back. And you get, I'm hoping it's young people that go through there, and they just break the windows on all those cars that are parked along that road. So there's a parking problem. So when he's saying parking along the road, I'm going, yeah. Have fun with that. So anyway, just, thank you.
Thank you. Douglas?
Good evening. I'm Douglas Beenan. I live on eleven forty-seven Sunset Drive. And when we first moved there, we were told, we moved there because of the rural nature. And slowly but surely, things are getting, as my wife said, rezoned. The edges are being changed and making higher and higher densities. And even though the discussion has always been about the Melrose-Buena Vista intersection, originally Buena Vista did not go through. And we were told that when they pushed that through, that people wouldn't go out through Buena Vista, Sunset, and Mar Vista because they'd prefer to go on the wide Melrose four-lane road. And that has not been the case. People use that as a shortcut to get over to the north side because there's so many lights on Melrose, that with these additional housing projects, that's going to be more and more used. As my wife brought up, the mitigation is going at the Melrose intersection, but nothing towards the two-lane windy road of Buena Vista, Mar Vista, and up on Sunset. One idea could be, why don't you close off Buena Vista again and stop all that traffic that does shortcut there? Because we know from watching the news and whatever, Google Maps, whatever, people are going to find the shortest route to get to places. And even though you make, you try to mitigate the intersection, it's not going to do a thing for the county roads of Buena Vista, Mar Vista, and Sunset, and we're going to take all that traffic. No discussion was made of that. And as before, my wife said that the Shadow Ridge Heights Apartments uses that road and has used that road for parking because they don't have enough spaces. Those seven spaces in front are going to be reused by them, preferably, I'm sure. And the road, the road is not being widened on both sides, so all that traffic that wants to go to the north is going to go to that two-lane windy road with a couple of very low-visibility turns that have had many accidents in the past. So I think that more consideration has to be done on the traffic study going to the north than just going down onto Melrose. And even Mr. Garrison commented on people getting out, those two driveways are going to dump right in the same place, trying to get across that extra turn lane. And right now, traffic can back up all the way to the church in the mornings and past the church. So I'm not sure that the study really has addressed the issues that are going to be there. And like I say, a suggestion might be, if really no one's going to travel to the north using Buena Vista, going right, heading towards Sunset, then why don't we block it back off again? And then all the traffic will go to this beautiful intersection of Melrose and Buena Vista. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Wagner followed by Mary Ann Marie Quinn.
Good evening, Randy Wagner. Currently work in the city of Vista. Recently moved to San Marcos, but since nineteen eighty-seven, I've lived in the Shadow Ridge Heights area, the corner of Longhorn and Shadow Ridge before the school was even built. So I'm very familiar with that whole area. Daughter went to Lake, graduated from RVV, and we spent plenty of times at Nucci's and Wasabi. I'm totally for the, the project. I think it's good for the community, and I urge you to support it. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Ann Marie Quinn, and I have a couple different points on this. I work in the city of Vista. My office has been here since nineteen ninety-seven. So I have lots of staff, and all of my office lives here, works here in the community. I live close by. But also, I have, I have five children personally, but eight between my husband and I. And I just got a call like two days ago from my daughter-in-law, who lives in Vista, born and raised here, been here her entire life. And her and my son are looking at a house in Marietta. They're moving out of the town because none of her friends from Vista High School, all of them, they can't live here. There's no place for them to go. There's no fun communities. All these communities that they're building are great family communities. I would be so proud if my kids could all be there and live close, so we can all be together. We can live, we can work in the city that we all support. But I was really sad. I'm like, don't go out there. I go, just give it another year. Wait, we're going to have a new project come in. And she actually, she was going to be here tonight. She's studying for a paper. She has a new baby. And she was going to be here tonight to show her support with her entire family because they, they need, we need, the city needs the new communities for the upcoming generation. Traffic is everywhere. If you're in Southern California, I've been everywhere, and it's everywhere. So we just have to try to figure out how to work with it. But it's everywhere. So thank you so much, and I support this, and I appreciate your support as well. Thank you.
Very good. That is the last speaker slip that I have. Anyone else in the audience want to address the commission on the project? Okay, we will close the public hearing then and open it up to discussion amongst the Commissioners. Questions? I'll kick it off. Mr. Winters and probably the traffic engineer from the applicant, in the traffic study, I was trying to turn to it in the MND, there were three hundred and something trips that were going to be generated by the, by the project, usually ten percent at the peak hour in the morning from six to eight, and then from four to six in the afternoon. And that's about, about thirty trips, thirty-plus trips in those two time periods. When you did the study, what was your assumption for the amount of traffic making the left turn out of the project and going north on Buena Vista?
Sure. And actually, great calculations, good memory. Thirty-one trips in the AM peak hour and thirty-seven in the PM peak hour. We did assume a sixty-forty split, sixty percent going towards Melrose and forty percent going the other direction on Buena Vista. Of course, as that approaches other intersections, it starts splitting off multiple ways. And that's how the traffic study looked at it.
So you did assume a portion of the traffic was going to go north on Buena Vista?
We did. And we did study segments, gosh, all the way up to, we studied segments on Mar Vista Drive, all the way out to Thibodeau. We studied intersections all the way up to Sunset Drive, all the key intersections. So we did look at all that.
And no significant impacts to those intersections from this project?
Correct. With the exception of, and I believe it was mentioned in the staff report, and Mr. Winters, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but there is a noted deficiency in the future at Mar Vista and Thibodeau, which would require an improvement, which we're contributing to. That's per the general plan program, EIR, and traffic study.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Commissioner Garrison?
Can we get an idea, Mr. Winter, of the cost, the price range of these houses? Because that seems to me to be a, a major issue one way or the other. It's certainly not low-income. It's not necessarily affordable. But what about compared to other houses in the area? Do you have any idea what the range is going to be? Or is that not an appropriate question?
I believe Mr. Tucker would have to answer that question.
Mr. Tucker? Ballpark figure on home prices?
The homes are going to start in the high fives and go up from there. We're doing everything we can to make the homes attainable. They're smaller lots, they're smaller homes, they're family-sized, and they're, they're parked well. But as you know, the constraint of land in the county, in, in the cities of San Diego, the amount of new homes versus the amount of new jobs is at a tremendous imbalance. And every, every time I come to a planning commissioner or a city council hearing in any city, there's always talk about density. And it, a lot of times is, oh, the density is too high. There's too many, there's too many homes. You may have heard me say earlier, when we removed a unit, it's so easy to say, we removed a unit. But truly, you removed a family from the neighborhood, and you raised the price of the rest of the homes. And so think about that as you talk amongst yourselves about the density and the affordability, the attainability of these homes. And so we're doing everything we can to keep the prices low to be attainable. Thank you.
Thank you.
One other question of the traffic engineer. Did you do a study of the traffic from the church compared to what the traffic is going to be with the condominiums?
We did. We did study the net increase in traffic. So the church today generates just over a hundred average daily trips without taking into consideration the school. So the school would actually add on to that. And if you add the school traffic in addition to the church traffic, it's, it's about equal in average daily trips. Obviously, the peak hours are a little different and the splits are different. But on an ADT basis, church and school, it would be about the same even. But we did not, to be conservative in our analysis, we did not take account of the school.
You said the same. The same is what? Church and the school the same?
The combination of traffic from the church and the school would be about the same as the amount of traffic.
About a hundred a day? And this is going to generate about three hundred a day?
No. So the church component only is approximately a hundred a day.
Okay.
Combining the church and the school, it is over four hundred. So the traffic level that you would see today from a school and a church on the site, fully occupied, all the rest into the future, would be about the same as the average daily traffic generated by the homes that are planned.
Got you. Thank you. One other question. Mr. Winter, what are the possible uses of this area under the present zoning? I mean, it's obviously a church. It would have to be, the zone would have to be changed in order to accommodate this development. So what could go in there? What types of things? Just for the.
Primarily two units per acre. So.
Housing, but what other types of development could go in there? Nothing unless it was rezoned?
There would be use permits for things like schools or daycare homes, things that are basically compatible on a land-use basis with residential neighborhoods.
Got you. All right, thank you.
Commissioners? Well, Commissioner Carroll, were you reaching? Go ahead. Commissioner Carroll?
No, sir. I was just adjusting my microphone, but no one else is chiming in, so I'll let you know my thoughts. And I'm in favor of the project. I don't, I don't have any real issues with it. I think the early designer review process has done its job and, and flushed out things that the planning commission didn't like about the project first time when we saw it, and those things have been addressed. The parking, they've added to the parking, they've added to the onsite amenities, and some, some of the aesthetics. And I really don't have any issue with the project. I, I feel like the, the traffic, the voluntary and required traffic mitigations are substantial enough to override the negativity of higher, higher density moving in, so I'm in favor of the project.
Commissioner Jackal?
I agree with Commissioner Carroll. I would like to thank the developers for listening to our discussion at the early design review, as well as the neighbors with whom you've consulted. I'm glad that you've expanded the play area, the community area. That was worrying me. And I appreciate the traffic mitigations and, and new things that you're going to add, and thanks to Commissioner Garrettson's questions, my concerns about the traffic are pretty much satisfied, so I'm in favor of the project.
Okay. My position is that the property has been planned on the general plan as medium-density. This project implements that, so I'm, I'm in favor of it. This is the second project in a row that we've had that has single-family detached units in the medium-density category, and I think it is a way to, although half a million dollars doesn't seem like a starter home, but that's the way housing is in San Diego County right now. So I'm in favor of it. I think it implements our general plan designation. They've done a good job, I think, of addressing the issues that we raised at early design review, and I think it's been studied. For the neighborhood, our job tonight is to make a recommendation to the city council, so in everything you hear us approve, it's going to be recommending to the city council that we, we approve the zone change. Because there is a zone change, it needs to go on to, the whole package goes on to the council. I would encourage you to get a hold of the staff report, get a hold of the mitigated negative deck, the environmental document, if you haven't already, and read that, read the traffic study, and understand the basis that this decision is being made on, and I think that might help you a bit more. So commissioners, can we entertain a motion? Commissioner Carroll?
Well, everybody's shy tonight. I don't know why, but I'll make a motion to, let me see, I gotta find the project number.
P-170042?
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve P-17-0042 as written, with the additional conditions of the voluntary traffic improvements as presented. Is that sufficient enough for a description, Mr. Winters, on the, on those two additional items, the traffic?
The, the elongation of the left turn lane and the improvements coming out of the shopping center have already been included in the conditions of approval.
Oh, I see. Okay. Then that's the motion.
If the commission prefers, we can also look at refining the condition of approval as, as Mr. Stone mentioned, just to ensure that we...
Yeah, if that's, if that's not standard, then, then the inclusion of, how do we say that, the?
City approval of amendments to the HOA?
Yeah, any changes to the HOA or CCNRs that affect the parking management plan would need city approval. Okay.
Commissioner Garrison?
I would second the motion.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the project. Any further discussion? Please cast your vote. All right. Vote again, please. System is a little slow tonight. Here we go. And the motion passes unanimously with Commissioner Bell and Kramer absent. Very good. We're going to take a five-minute break. If there are any students from Rancho that need their forms signed, if you'll bring them up, and then we'll reconvene for item number two. It's interesting.
Oh, three response questions. Oh, yeah. I mean, I feel like I was, like, part A, but then part B, it's like, I felt like I was repeating myself.
Yeah, you do. Yeah.
So I was like, it was basically the same thing.
I know.
I was like, I don't know. I just kind of like wrote down the same. Yeah, exactly.
Other than that, it was pretty.
Yeah. What other APs did you take?
Oh, I took AP Design.
Oh, okay. Oh, really? Oh, AP, yeah, you're a part of that. AP Spanish. Oh, really? Oh, nice. How are those?
Zero.
Oh, was it? Huh, okay. Yeah, the only other one I took was AP Government.
That was really easy.
That's right. Yeah. Yeah. The one AP class that I, or that I'm taking right now, but I didn't do the example, was AP Luresure.
English, right?
Yeah, English Luresure, and I, from what I hear, that's like extremely hard.
I think English was actually a lot.
It's the same thing. Oh. Oh, really? Oh, yeah. Um, not, not yet. I'm going to UST, but like, I haven't done like any of the survey or information in putting it like a roommate or something.
Really?
Yeah, not yet. Yeah, and I don't think I get my courses until like much later in summer. Okay, yeah. Yeah, I guess, yeah. The entire church just attended. Um, but I think there was a, well, there was like two like things that needed to get passed, and then like the third was probably like a review.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. Yeah, this is about Swedish, foot massage, or massages.
Oh, is it really?
Yeah. Yeah, I guess they're trying to get, they're trying to get a special use permit. Yeah. It was like a little more recent. And then there's like one action item, I guess discussing the capital improvement budget. So I guess, yeah, I guess they're probably just going to talk about it. Exactly. They, I guess, like, they had to, I feel like...
There's like a waiting list?
For like, like different planning commissions and like what date you can go up. So I guess you just have all that time as you prepare. And so I guess you have to, you have to research a lot, like, just, like, just when you're wanting to build, like, follow like certain guidelines and acts.
Our next public hearing is Oriental Natural Treatment. Be ready for your staff report. Very good. You have the floor.
Good evening, Chairman Rossler, commissioners, planning staff, and members of the public. It is my pleasure tonight to present to you the next agenda item. This is for a special use permit for Oriental Natural Treatment, which is a proposed massage establishment at 1976 Hacienda Drive, permit number P-170440. This is for a special use permit to allow a new massage establishment at the address of 1976 Hacienda Drive. Proposed hours are 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. each day of the week. The proposed suite is about 2,500 square feet in an existing tenant space. Per the city's zoning ordinance for the commercial two, C2 commercial zone, section 1840020, the massage establishment has to meet the following criteria. The business shall be closed between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. The massage establishment has to be 2,000 linear feet away from another said establishment of a massage establishment. No food or alcoholic beverages can be served or sold at the business. The permit shall expire after one year of date of adoption, but may be extended for subsequent one-year periods by the planning commission. Any violation of these conditions would void this special use permit. The nearest massage establishment from this property is located at 1463 West Vista Way. That is the Relax Zone Thai Massage. That is approximately 3,564 feet away, so it's more than the 2,000 linear foot requirement per the code section. The property is currently zoned commercial, C2. Per the general plan, it is designated general commercial, and is surrounded by commercial on all three, four sides of the property. This is the proposed floor plan, and this is just proposing the massage rooms and the massage areas in the establishment. The proposed use is consistent with the general plan and any applicable specific plan because the property is located within the general plan, within the general plan's general commercial land use area. The proposed use is also permitted in the applicable zone because the C2 commercial zone allows for a massage establishment with approval of a special use permit, and the use will conform to applicable laws and regulations as well. The size of the site is sufficient to reasonably accommodate the planned activities, since all infrastructure and structures are already existing, and the operating characteristics will be compatible with the existing and planned uses in the vicinity. Proposed use will also provide the neighborhood and the city with the service that will contribute to its general welfare, and will not be unduly detrimental to the health, safety, or general welfare of the people in and around that area. The staff's recommendation tonight is to adopt the resolution approving the special use permit for a new massage establishment at 1976 Hacienda Drive, and that concludes the staff's presentation, and I can answer any questions that you may have for me or the applicant.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Jackal?
Yes, please. The other massage establishment that you mentioned, is that in the same shopping area, or is it a different one farther down the road?
It's further down the road. It's about 3,500 feet away down West Vista Way, so it's across a freeway down the street.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's pretty far away.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I noticed in the conditions of approval that there were conditions from the Sheriff's Department. Were there any background checks done of the operator, and? I didn't see any. And/or the Health Department?
Chairman Rossler, perhaps I can help address the question. The Sheriff's Department provides generic conditions based on the type of use that's being proposed. I don't know for sure if they run background checks. I know that through business license, it is customary as part of issuing massage establishment permits, that there is a process whereby they do communicate with the Sheriff's Department. So at that point, they would make sure that the massage therapists, the massage that are working on that massage establishment actually go through a check with assistance, again, from the Sheriff's Department at the business license issuance stage, that is. But I'm not sure that at this point they, they do all of that.
Okay, so that's a future step that would occur.
Yes, that is typically of that, part of that process.
Is it the operator and the therapists that both, both have to be licensed?
The massage therapist licensed by the state. I'm not sure about the operator themselves, if they're not massage therapists themselves, if they're just mainly operating as business people, so.
Okay, very good. I have one speaker slip from the... Okay, very good. I have one speaker slip from the applicant, but she only requests to answer questions. So there's, do we have questions of the applicant? No? Okay, so we will open and close the public hearing and move on to commission discussion. Okay. Commissioner Bell?
Is this taking the place of an existing business that you know of? Do you know what's in that suite?
It was taking the place of just a retail location, but I think that space has been vacant for quite some time.
I'm just trying to picture where it is. Is it next to the Tux Shop and the Dress Shop? Or, I don't remember which shopping center it's in, and the applicant may know as well.
It's the Indian Store Shopping Center on Hacienda Drive, the new trampoline place that just opened up right by North Park Produce.
And I think the trampoline place is the other side of North Park Produce, if I'm not correct.
Right, it's the other tenant space, but this one is further down by the China Buffet, I think it is.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Thanks.
Commissioner Looney?
A number of years ago, there was a suit on a very similar situation business on Melrose, where the city ended up paying some legal fees for activity that was not licensed. And so I think that's why the question was asked about licensing. And we just wanna make certain that licensing and the background is all adhered to, so the city doesn't find itself in that same situation as it did in the past.
I agree, so. Someone like to make a motion, then? Commissioner Garrison?
I would like to move that we adopt Resolution two oh one eight, granting a special use permit to a new massage establishment at nineteen seventy-six Hacienda Drive.
Commissioner Bell?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the use permit. Any further discussion? If not, let's cast our vote. And the motion is approved unanimously with Commissioner Kramer absent. Congratulations, so. That's great. Next item on the agenda is the review of the capital improvement program. And this is an action item, and so our job tonight is making a finding that the CIP is in conformity with the general plan. Mr. Conley?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. We bring this item before you on an annual basis for conformity finding with the general plan. The capital improvement program budget is a five-year budget for capital or city public projects. We review it annually. We're gonna start doing that on a two-year basis, starting this year, to set the budget for the following two years with the programming of funds for future years out. State law requires the planning commission make a finding of conformity with the general plan for any projects that are in the CIP. So we don't go through the entire CIP with you, but we do review new projects that are added at the beginning of the fiscal year. So the CIP includes categories for streets, signals, drainage, sewer, parks and rec, public facilities, and housing. We're only adding new projects in three of those categories this year. Those are traffic signals, streets, and sewer. And I'll cover those individually. First is a traffic signal at the intersection of Beau Beer and Goodwin, which is shown in the overhead photo there on the right. This is directly adjacent to Panther Way, which is the driveway into Vista High School. Any of you familiar with this intersection know that there's a lot of residential traffic that comes out onto Beau Beer and creates safety issues. We've had a lot of accident history there, so it is next on our list for a traffic signal, and it's being added to the CIP as a result. It would be coordinated with Panther Way, but it is consistent with the circulation element and the public safety and facilities element to provide and maintain safe traffic operations. We also have an interconnect, which is a communications upgrade for all the traffic signals north of the seventy-eight. We're currently working on that south of the seventy-eight, and we'll move to the north side of the city. That's through a Highway Safety Improvement Program grant, which will allow the signals to all communicate better with the city's main control center at City Hall. We're adding one project in the streets category. That is a future pedestrian bridge at Vista Village. This has not been decided to move forward yet with certainty, but we are going to study it because of the lack of connectivity between the Transit Center and the Vista Village downtown area and the potential for a better pedestrian connection. This is consistent with circulation element policies to improve pedestrian safety. And finally, we have some sewer projects. The first is the Vista Carlsbad. This is the main line that runs along the south side of seventy-eight. They'll be upsizing that line in accordance with our sewer master plan. We're relining a number of small diameter pipes within the Vista Sanitation District, and we're upsizing a pipe along Eucalyptus near Citrus. So those three projects are added with associated funding. And with that, the staff's recommending that the commission make a finding of conformity with the general plan for those added projects, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Jackal?
Thank you. Mr. Conley, on the pedestrian bridge, could you explain, my first question is, why it's felt needed? Have pedestrians been being hurt at that intersection?
No, there's been a number of different scenarios looked at to improve traffic operations at Olive and that intersection at Santa Fe and Vista Village. One time, we were looking at building a bridge from Olive Avenue over to Orange, just north of this, in order to reroute the bus traffic on a north Santa Fe and eliminate this intersection. We've looked at a number of different scenarios to try to get traffic moving through that area. One of the things that slows traffic down at that intersection is the pedestrian time when people are crossing. And so it would improve traffic operations, but a council member's asked us to evaluate it for that reason and just to provide a safer feeling pedestrian movement between the Transit Center and the downtown.
Okay, and my second question is, if you decide to go ahead with it, will we see what it looks like?
Yes, it will come back to the commission as a public improvement project. We don't bring those specifically to you for approval of funding, but when we have design components, we typically will bring those to you for a design recommendation.
Thank you.
It's just being studied at this time, though.
My son works for the city of Dana Point, and on Pacific Coast Highway going into their city, there was the same type of issue, people crossing PCH to get to Doheny, and they built a pedestrian bridge, and the travel times through there have improved because we're not waiting for pedestrians to get across that six-lane collector now, so. Commissioner Garrison? Yes, Mr. Conley, just a clarification. So these are only projects that have not been approved yet, correct?
That's correct. They're, excuse me, they're being added to the CIP this year with new funding. They're all either in the design phase or proposed for early design.
Which department does parks and open space?
Engineering is responsible for all the public projects, and they coordinate with the departments that are responsible for maintenance operations. So in that case, it would be engineering with interface with Parks and Rec.
Gotcha. And is somebody looking at our general plan relative to the number of acres per thousand population? As we increase population, are we increasing parks and open space to keep up with that?
That is a discussion that our city council is having as part of their goals that they adopted this, earlier this year. One of them was to increase and improve park facilities, and so the staff is bringing back a report to them, I think, at the next meeting. And it will include a recommendation to do a needs analysis for parks facilities in response to all the new development that we've had.
Do you know if, for instance, there was this development on Sycamore and Watson Way? And one of the comments in there was that this would generate eight hundred thousand dollars toward parks. Is there any consideration of keeping those dollars in that general area? Is that part of the process that you go through? In other words, if that's generating eight hundred thousand dollars, and there's a need for a park down there, is that part of the consideration?
The staff is really not looking at it from the perspective of put the dollars from the project near the project. We're looking at it from a perspective of what is the citywide need, and what dollars do we have to start at the top priority and move our way down? So typically, that doesn't happen at the staff level. However, the CIP and the funding is subject to the council's approval. They ultimately make those decisions, so that's a possibility.
All right, thank you. Very good. If there aren't any other questions, can we have a motion to find that the CIP is in conformity with the general plan? Commissioner Jackal?
Thank you. Okay, I will move that we adopt Resolution twenty eighteen next, making a finding of conformity with the general plan for the twenty eighteen nineteen and nineteen twenty CIP budget.
Very good. Commissioner Carroll?
I will second the motion.
Good. We have a motion and a second to approve. Cast your vote, please. And the motion is approved unanimously of the Commissioners present. Very good. Commissioner, or, Mr. Conley, your report on what's going on in the city?
I wanted to just share, we have another meeting on June fifth. That'll be our next commission meeting. After that, we'll have a little recess. We will not have a second meeting in June or a first meeting in July. So you all get to hopefully enjoy a little bit of your summer vacation. Then meeting after that'll be July, the second meeting in July, the seventeenth or nineteenth, whatever that is. But the fifth, we'll have a couple of residential projects on the agenda, so we'll see you then. I really don't have any updates in terms of construction or new projects. It's consistent with what we talked about last time, but I'm open for any questions.
Okay. Is this our student commissioners' last meeting since school's going to be out here shortly?
I believe so. So thank you very much to the student commissioners as well. I didn't think about that, and good luck in the future, guys. Thank you for coming.
All right. Commissioner Looney?
What's the status of Delphi's Corner? Is that still moving forward?
Delphi's Corner is moving forward. If you probably noticed, they're starting to build the retaining walls along Vista Way. There is some delay with their grading as a result of some cultural resources that have been located on the site. And so they're working through that process of evaluating those and working with the developer on adjusting their grading plan to account for that area, but they are still moving forward.
Good, okay, thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Garrison?
Yes, Mr. Conley, a question about property, I believe it's in Oceanside, next to Ages on Melrose at the corner of Cannon.
Yes.
Those weeds are getting bigger, and the, all the vehicles are resting more, and how would I find out about what the status is? Is there anything that the city can do to kinda?
Commissioner Jackal's actually asked me about that property a number of times. Oceanside's indicated that the developer pulled a building permit, started improvements, and then walked from the site. So I don't know what they have in the way of bonds or what they intend to do, if anything, with their bonds, but it's something that you should be contacting the Oceanside Building Department about or their Code Enforcement Activity Office if there's weeds and things like that.
Just ugly.
Yeah, I agree.
Very good. Any other comments or questions? All right, very good. Then we will stand adjourned until June fifth.